Good evening, everyone. Apologize that we were running a little bit late in our previous closed session. Welcome to tonight's Semurfell City Council meeting. It's Monday, April 3rd. And I will request that the city clerk call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Yaron Skolari.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here this evening. I will turn to the city attorney to see what his report out is on the closed sessions that were held on Tuesday, March 28th, Wednesday, March 29th, and today at 1:00 PM and today at 6:30.
I had the pleasure of attending all those closed sessions with the council, Mayor Kate, and can report that no reportable action was taken at any of them.
Thank you. So, welcome. We are super glad that you're here, whether you're in person or virtually listening in. I want to take a moment to recognize the commitment that Semurfell has shown towards enabling our community to participate in council meetings, both for city residents as well as people who don't live here in Semurfell but are interested in participating. As you may know, the state of California recently lifted the COVID emergency order, which means that our council has the options, could have the option, of just going back to in-person only meetings and not having a hybrid. In fact, there are many jurisdictions in California, and there are actually some jurisdictions in Marin County who have opted to do just that. But for us, we really want people to be able to participate live. So, we remain, Semurfell remains committed to providing the opportunity for all to participate in real time, whether here in the chambers or in the comfort or from the comfort of their own home. Before we start, I would like to include a land acknowledgement. It's an important part of the opening of our meeting. We acknowledge that the present-day city of Semurfell is traditionally home to the Coast Miwok people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Northeria. We thank the original caretakers of this land and honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. So, welcome. I will turn to the city clerk who'll describe how people can participate either in person or virtually.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. This meeting tonight is being streamed and recorded. It's being streamed live to YouTube, and members of the public can provide public comment by phone by calling 669-444-9171 and use the meeting ID 844-3204-9611. And they can press *9 to raise their hand for public comments, or if they're watching on Zoom, they can use the raise hand feature as well. If you experience any technical difficulties, you can contact me at city.clerk@cityofsemurfell.org. Displayed on the podium and the projector is a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of Semurfell you live in, or if you're from outside of Semurfell. And we are offering closed captioning for this meeting on Zoom. You can select the live transcript button to enable this feature. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we start our meetings with open time for public expression. This is any item that is not on our agenda. And what I'll do first, if it's okay, I'll go through the cards. And then, if your name isn't called, then you'll be able to come up, and then we'll go to the hybrid. So, first card is Dave Rhodes. Oh, you were already jumping up. You knew you were on top. Go ahead. Hello, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. I'm Dave Rhodes. I am the co-chair of Walk-Bike Semurfell, a volunteer-led organization under the Marin County Bicycle Coalition. Our mission is to make Semurfell a safer and more enjoyable place to walk and bike every day, everywhere. And I'm here today to comment on the Cancelled Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee meeting, aka BPAC, meeting that was previously scheduled for this month. First off, we're grateful for the progress the city has made to date and emphasize that we are happy to have such great partners at the Department of Public Works. I want to really emphasize that. We totally understand that the department and the city is impacted by staffing issues and the challenges posed by the recent storms, certainly on our infrastructure, and more. That said, we are disappointed by the last-minute cancellation of the BPAC meeting, which is the third canceled or postponed meeting of the last five. So, that's a big deal. Our organization and others rely on regular public meetings with the city and resident advisory boards to give things like comment, to learn what's going on, to have a dialogue. This is especially unfortunate, given the recent death on our city streets as a resident was walking across Second Street at Lincoln one month ago. I imagine you know about that. We ask ourselves and you, is the city taking the safety of walkers and bikers seriously? This year is an important year for our city. We are expecting an update to the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. There are numerous projects in the pipeline, and there's heightened interest on safe routes to schools. I hope you, as council, can help reinforce the importance of these public meetings and take action to improve walking and biking in Semurfell. Thank you so much for your time and commitment to making Semurfell a wonderful and safe place to live and work.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. And next, Andrew Davidson.
Good evening, council. It's a pleasure to be here. My name's Andrew Davis, and I live on G Street. And I'd like to talk briefly about the 1515 Fourth Street apartment complex project. Very briefly, the timing of the planning commission meeting is next week. And of course, city of Semurfell schools will be out on spring break. Families may or may not be out of town, but it limits the opportunity for people to come and speak at a public forum for such a really important project, especially in this area of the town. The renderings that we see in the architectural drawings, they're very nice, but I think we would be better served by having a third party picked by the city, paid for by the developer, come and prepare those renderings, maybe from different perspectives. How about from City Hall? You're going to see it, we're going to see it from City Hall, this very large structure. How about from Fifth Street, Mission, El Cerrito? It's going to stick out. I do think story poles would be really helpful. This building is going to be right at the back of sidewalk and seven stories high, eight stories high, I'm not exactly sure. Public outreach. So, the staff report that went before the design review board indicated that there was one formal written comment and four informal comments. And it also said that city staff had reached out the typical 300 feet from the site. That's very typical. However, this is not a typical project. 300 feet from that location doesn't get you to Fifth Street. It doesn't get you to the east side of D Street. You just nick the south side of Third Street, and you're about a block down going west. You miss all of us here, living out up in the hills and out on G Street and H Street and other places as well. I took a quick look at the traffic analysis, and I don't want to comment too much on it. I did want to say that I was disappointed that residents are not walking or biking. That traffic analysis said that while that consultant was out, they did not see one pedestrian or one bicyclist at the intersections. That's Fourth Street, East Street, Shaver. I'm surprised. I hope we do better than that and get out. They also mentioned that on Fourth Street and East Street, that the speed limit's 30 miles an hour. I think it's 25. Third Street's 30 miles, or it's 25 miles an hour. I'd be surprised if Fourth and E are 30. It just makes me pause, and I think we need to do a little better, a little more investigation as residents to see what's going on. If the city participated in that traffic analysis and paid for it, I can understand why the city's logo is on it. If the city did not participate financially, I don't think the city's logo belongs on that traffic analysis. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And Scott Dumas.
Hi. I'm also here, Semurfell resident, G Street neighbor as well, and here to also voice my strong objection to the project. It's, I've been here 18 years. Downtown's across the US, and you know, the historic one-, two-story buildings give the city character and uniqueness that can't be recreated once lost. For size comparison, I actually went with my daughter this weekend and tape measure, and we measured the Luther Burbank Building, the Bank of America, the huge building next to Bank of America. We actually measured it, the footprint, and this building is truly as high and two-and-a-half times the size of that Luther Burbank Building along Fourth Street. I know the state mandates are pushing every city and county to meet the housing goals, but at what cost? Yes, this would provide housing, but it's at the full market rate, likely $4,000 to $5,000 per month, and it's paid to private equity investors with interest only in their bank accounts and certainly not to Semurfell. Don't be fooled by the Semurfell address of the developer. It's a private equity company, and the main goal, of course, is to maximize profits. If this is approved, it will open the floodgates for developers along the Fourth Street corridor. Profits are going to be so high, the developers will be able to offer too good to turn down offers to existing building owners, tear them down, and put another seven-story apartment building. I feel like the charm and character will be lost forever. So, I agree with Andy before me that if this can be postponed, at least, the meeting next week, which again is during spring break, so that people can have some more time to take a look at this. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Krista Gatewood.
The pleasure of attending all those closed sessions with the council, Mayor Kate, and can report that no reportable action was taken at any of them.
Thank you. So, welcome. We are super glad that you're here, whether you're in person or virtually listening in. I want to take a moment to recognize the commitment that San Rafael has shown towards enabling our community to participate in council meetings, both for city residents as well as people who don't live here in San Rafael but are interested in participating. As you may know, the state of California recently lifted the COVID emergency order, which means that our council has the options, could have the option, of just going back to in-person only meetings and not having a hybrid. In fact, there are many jurisdictions in California, and there are actually some jurisdictions in Marin County who have opted to do just that. But for us, we really want people to be able to participate live. So we remain, San Rafael remains committed to providing the opportunity for all to participate in real time, whether here in the chambers or in the comfort or from the comfort of their own home. Before we start, I would like to include a land acknowledgement. It's an important part of the opening of our meeting. We acknowledge that the present-day city of San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Mewaw people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancho Ria. We thank the original caretakers of this land and honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. So, welcome. I will turn to the city clerk. He'll describe how people can participate, either in person or virtually.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. This meeting tonight is being streamed and recorded. It's being streamed live to YouTube, and members of the public can provide public comment by phone by calling 669-444-9171 and use the meeting ID 844-3204-9611. And they can press *9 to raise their hand for public comments, or if they're watching on Zoom, they can use the raise hand feature as well. If you experience any technical difficulties, you can contact me at city.clerk@cityofsanrafil.org. Displayed on the podium and the projector is a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in, or if you're from outside of San Rafael. And we are offering closed captioning for this meeting on Zoom. You can select the live transcript button to enable this feature. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we start our meetings with open time for public expression. This is any item that is not on our agenda. And what I'll do first, if it's okay, I'll go through the cards. And then if your name isn't called, then you'll be able to come up, and then we'll go to the hybrid. So, first card is Dave Rhodes. Oh, you were already jumping up. You knew you were on top. Go ahead. Hello, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. I'm Dave Rhodes. I am the co-chair of Walk-Bike San Rafael, a volunteer-led organization under the Marin County Bicycle Coalition. Our mission is to make San Rafael a safer and more enjoyable place to walk and bike every day, everywhere. And I'm here today to comment on the Cancelled Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee Meeting, aka BPAC, meeting that was previously scheduled for this month. First off, we're grateful for the progress the city has made to date and emphasize that we are happy to have such great partners at the Department of Public Works. I want to really emphasize that. We totally understand that the department and the city is impacted by staffing issues and the challenges posed by the recent storms, certainly on our infrastructure, and more. That said, we are disappointed by the last-minute cancellation of the BPAC meeting, which is the third canceled or postponed meeting of the last five. So, that's a big deal. Our organization and others rely on regular public meetings with the city and resident advisory boards to give things like comment, to learn what's going on, to have a dialogue. This is especially unfortunate, given the recent death on our city streets as a resident was walking across Second Street at Lincoln one month ago. I imagine you know about that. We ask ourselves and you, is the city taking the safety of walkers and bikers seriously? This year is an important year for our city. We are expecting an update to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. There are numerous projects in the pipeline, and there's heightened interest on safe routes to schools. I hope you, as council, can help reinforce the importance of these public meetings and take action to improve walking and biking in San Rafael. Thank you so much for your time and commitment to making San Rafael a wonderful and safe place to live and work.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. And next, Andrew Davidson.
Good evening, council. It's a pleasure to be here. My name's Andrew Davis, and I live on G Street. And I'd like to talk briefly about the 1515 Fourth Street Apartment Complex project. Very briefly, the timing of the Planning Commission meeting is next week. And of course, City of San Rafael schools will be out on spring break. Families may or may not be out of town, but it limits the opportunity for people to come and speak at a public forum for such a really important project, especially in this area of the town. The renderings that we see in the architectural drawings, they're very nice, but I think we would be better served by having a third party picked by the city, paid for by the developer, come and prepare those renderings, maybe from different perspectives. How about from City Hall? You're gonna see it, we're gonna see it from City Hall, this very large structure. How about from Fifth Street, Mission, El Cerrito? It's going to stick out. I do think story poles would be really helpful. This building is gonna be right at the back of sidewalk and seven stories high, eight stories high, I'm not exactly sure. Public outreach. So, the staff report that went before the Design Review Board indicated that there was one formal written comment and in four informal comments. And it also said that city staff had reached out the typical 300 feet from the site. That's very typical. However, this is not a typical project. 300 feet from that location doesn't get you to Fifth Street. It doesn't get you to the east side of D Street. You just nick the south side of Third Street, and you're about a block down going west. You miss all of us here, living out up in the hills and out on G Street and H Street and other places as well. I took a quick look at the traffic analysis, and I don't want to comment too much on it. I did want to say that I was disappointed that residents are not walking or biking. That traffic analysis said that while that consultant was out, they did not see one pedestrian or one bicyclist at the intersections. That's Fourth Street, East Street, Shaver. I'm surprised. I hope we do better than that and get out. They also mentioned that on Fourth Street and East Street, that the speed limit's 30 miles an hour. I think it's 25. Third Street's 30 miles, or it's 25 miles an hour. I'd be surprised if Fourth and E are 30. It just makes me pause, and I think we need to do a little better, a little more investigation as residents to see what's going on. If the city participated in that traffic analysis and paid for it, I can understand why the city's logo is on it. If the city did not participate financially, I don't think the city's logo belongs on that traffic analysis. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And Scott Dumas.
Hi. I'm also here, San Rafael resident, G Street neighbor as well, and here to also voice my strong objection to the project. It's, I've been here 18 years. Downtowns across the US. And, you know, the historic one-to-story buildings give the city character and uniqueness that can't be recreated once lost. For size comparison, I actually went with my daughter this weekend and tape measure, and we measured the Luther Burbank Building, the Bank of America, the huge building next to Bank of America. We actually measured it, the footprint, and this building is truly as high and two and a half times the size of that Luther Burbank Building along Fourth Street. I know the state mandates are pushing every city and county to meet the housing goals, but at what cost? Yes, this would provide housing, but it's at the full market rate, likely $4,000 to $5,000 per month, and it's paid to private equity investors with interest only in their bank accounts and certainly not to San Rafael. Don't be fooled by the San Rafael address of the developer. It's a private equity company, and the main goal, of course, is to maximize profits. If this is approved, it will open the floodgates for developers along the Fourth Street corridor. Profits are gonna be so high, the developers will be able to offer too good to turn down offers to existing building owners, tear them down, and put another seven-story apartment building. I feel like the charm and character will be lost forever. So, I agree with Andy before me that if this can be postponed, at least, the meeting next week, which again is during spring break, so that people can have some more time to take a look at this. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Krista Gatewood.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm also here about the 1515 Fourth Street Apartments. I support everything Scott and Andy have said. My main agenda is to just get the meeting postponed from the Planning Commission to the following week because we are all on spring break. It's such a massive project that everybody in this town deserves to have a voice and to be at that meeting. The traffic study was very inadequate. I live in Gerstl Park, and East Street to Second and Third needs to be studied. Shaver Street, they said, was gonna lose parking, which pulls parking from residents on that street. There's many other issues, and people have the right to be heard while they're in town, and it just seems that it was conveniently planned during spring break. So, we ask that you move it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will, after we have public comment, we really can't engage in things that aren't agendized, but I will ask Director Judassey to come up and just maybe say a few comments at the end. And as you heard me say, we're a hybrid format, so even if someone is out of town, they can still participate. So, moving right ahead, though, anyone else in the chambers like to comment? I'd public comment. Not seeing anyone in the chambers, we will go and see if anyone virtually would like to comment, and then we'll have Director Judassey. Thank you.
I do see a couple of hands raised.
Yeah, this is John Reynolds, living in the canal. You hear me, right?
Yes, go ahead.
Appreciate it. Thank you. As you know, there was a rally, a march from Northgate Mall, went from Civic Center down to the Police Department in San Rafael on Cesar Chavez Day, the 31st, and raising the issue about, well, accountability for the police officers who assaulted the Latino man drinking beer in the canal. There needs to be that accountability. That goes to the attorney of record, yeah, for Goli, I think. The other thing, though, is I saw in the newspaper, there were a lot of suggestions that the Police Department made to make reforms to the Police Department, including cultural competency for the people and oversight. So, I would hope that we move forward on those recommendations by the Police Department, and we want to move forward on those. The other item I'm talking about is a concern for 400 Canal and to accommodate people that face eviction or have already been evicted, or I know there have been done things done to provide help and rental assistance to these people, displacement possibilities, but I would want to preserve the affordable housing from eviction and also gentrification. I talked to one of the staff about gentrification. That's not going on right now, but we need to be concerned about gentrification, particularly in places that are opportunity zones. So, that's something we need to consider.
Hello. This is Lori in Gerstl Park, and I have to tell you that I totally agree with Mr. Rhodes. I called Raffat on, I think, Wednesday and mentioned that the BPAC meeting falls on the first night of Passover. I got a call today that says that they couldn't agree on a meeting date, so they canceled the meeting. At the last meeting that I was at, somebody had suggested that the meeting start at 7:00. Another person, another member agreed. Two other people didn't care. And the last person decided he didn't want to make a vote because he didn't want to be responsible. There's something wrong with all of this, and I just wanted to bring it up because the meeting A shouldn't have been canceled. It should have been postponed. And the fact that they can't agree on anything is, seems to be a major problem, and it's not a major thing that they're trying to agree on. Thank you.
I've unmuted you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Thanks so much. I'm sorry. I'm on my bike ride commute home. Listen, I just wanted to check in with you. I saw that you did a sweep at Albert Park, and I noticed in the week afterward that basically the people you swept had just been dispersed into little parklets, you know, a couple blocks or miles away. So, those people you swept, they no longer have functional bathrooms, which they may have had access to when they were at Albert Park. This is not only very bad for their own health, but it is also bad for public health. And I'd like to point out that there were multiple cases of cellulitis and things far worse at your so-called SSA that was being run by your police officer, Lynn Murphy. And, you know, that still hasn't been addressed. It hasn't been investigated. I would like to point out that a lot of the correspondence between myself and your city attorney office while that was going on had to do with body cam and Lynn Murphy turning on and off her body cam at will. And I think it's important to remind people in San Rafael that your city attorney's office sent me a letter, which they should make available to all the public, stating that your police officers are permitted to turn on and off body cam at their own discretion. This is in complete violation of Lexipol policy, and, you know, it shouldn't be that way. It's remarkable that we even got body cam of the beating of Mateo. So, what's going on with your police department really needs to be better examined, but your treatment of poor people in general, working-class people, whether it's Mateo, whether it's the unhoused community, is completely unacceptable, and it's a disgrace to the county.
I see no other hands raised, but I'll give everyone a moment. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I'll close. Public comment on open time for public expression and ask Director Judassey, knowing, again, we can't get deep into the issue, wasn't on the agenda, but if you could maybe talk to how people can participate, get information.
Sure. Thank you. Yes, because this is an active project that's currently going through a process. We are not able to comment on anything on this tonight. However, I did want to mention a couple of things. One is that if there are people that are wanting to participate in the process but are not able to attend, we do also accept comment letters, and anyone can reach out to the staff planner or me prior to the meeting and provide input. I also wanted to mention that I have taken notes on what the concerns are. I'll be working with staff from Planning and Public Works, and perhaps we can reach out to commenters after and provide some additional information.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll just say, because you have a longer email, people can also email city.clerk@cityofsanrafil.org. And also, you can also just go to our website and click on Contact Us, and that will also make it to Director Judassey because we welcome your comments as well as your concerns. So, thank you. Okay. Thank you so much. Next item is City Manager and Councilmember Reports, and I shall turn to City Manager Jim Schutz.
Thank you very much, Mayor Kate and City Council. I just have a couple announcements and a couple upcoming events. First of all, we're really excited because we've been talking about alternative response teams for a while with the City Council, and the council approved the team earlier this year with the Petaluma People's Services Center. And that team is, we're now calling the SAFE Team, which is specialized assistance for everyone, went into place on Wednesday of last week. So, just wanted to report that out, that that team is in the field 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. every day, and they're being dispatched through SRPD. So, it's a great option for certain kinds of calls that can be handled through the SAFE Team. And I know Chief Spiller and Lieutenant Behringer had spent a lot of time putting together the proposal and working with the County of Marin on it and the council reviewing and approving it. So, just kind of a milestone of having them in place. They were already quite busy, starting on Wednesday of last week. And then also, another milestone, Fire Station 55, which is the one on Point San Pedro Road, is now occupied. It had been under temporary quarters for some time as that building was being, it wasn't a complete knockdown and rebuild, but it was just about as close as you can get to that and modernization of the site. So, of all of the projects that we had on our list to go through, which was that station, completely reconstructing Station 57 near the Civic Center, 52 by Trader Joe's Whole Foods Montecito area, the Public Safety Center, including Station 51, all of those are complete. We're finishing up 55. There's still some last things to do, even though staff is now occupying it. And then the last one on that list is Fire Station 54 in the Canal neighborhood, which will be next up, and we're looking forward to having the firefighters move into that building soon. So, big milestone there with the firefighters moving into Fire Station 55. So, we just have 54 left out of all of those projects that we are doing. And then two quick upcoming events. Earth Day is coming up, so we have both the downtown clean and green on Friday morning from 10:00 to 12:00 on April 21st, and the morning of Saturday, April 22nd, is several different sites around the community, including 101 Surf Sports, Shoreline Path, Sun Valley Neighborhood. So, if anyone is interested in volunteering, we usually have a great turnout from the San Rafael community for Earth Day and these neighborhood cleanups. It's cityofsanrafil.org/events, I think, is the easiest place to find all of them. You could also go cityofsanrafil.org/volunteer, but events, I think you see all of them in that place. I just wanted to make sure that people knew that those were coming up on April 21st and 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll turn to my colleagues for Councilmember Reports, and I shall start with the Vice Mayor, Yoren Scalati.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. There we go. So, well, I have to go a little bit back because I was unfortunately sick for March 20th, so I didn't do the reports. So, I will mention the March 8, we had the community meeting policing in San Rafael. It was, this is independently of the investigation, and this was like a follow-up from the community meetings that we had back in the fall. It was a hybrid meeting. We had about 50 people. It was in Spanish, and it was really great to hear again from the community, and we are definitely working on some other measures. So, Chief Spiller was there as well and many other staff members. Also, attended the MCCMC General Meeting, Marin County Council of Mayors and Councilmembers. Mayor Kate was there, and I can't remember if there were other council members, but to me, the highlight was the update from Anne Gray for Vivalon and regarding the Vivalon's healthy aging campus. So, that was always great to hear, and I think many other cities and towns are already looking at what is possible, you know, to do. So, I'm very proud of that. Attended also the Marin Women's Political Action Committee Annual Luncheon, and they had a lot of students that they were celebrated in there. And also, I hosted the MCCMC Climate Action Committee meeting. This was my last meeting as co-chair, and some of the, again, MCCMC is Marin County Council of Mayors and Councilmembers. And some of the highlights from last year and this year, this is where the cities and towns, we worked together to implement climate change measures. So, a lot of the towns and cities passed the gas blower resolution. We also discussed, as a county, the food packaging ordinance and also electrifying buildings. So, we keep learning from each other. And two more things. March 30th, there was a meeting from youth, from alcohol justice. It was bilingual, and it was very inspiring. This is the youth and some of the vision that they have for the canal, and they want to see more food gardens to make it more beautiful, but also for the families to have organic festivals and herbs, lots of fruit trees. So, that was always very inspiring to hear from the youth. And last, but not least, I attended the first Canal Easter Egg Hand last Saturday, and there were a lot of eggs, a lot of happy kids and families, and I really appreciate the rec department was there showcasing some of the options for our new Pickleweed Park and to get the community to provide input. So, that's the report for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurt.
Thank you. Couple things. So, on my own time and expense, through a gift through Jewish Community Relations Council, I did a 10-day seminar in Israel, and so that's why I missed the last meeting. And we got to see sort of democracy at risk in a state that is basically in a civil war right now, but we also had the opportunity to visit amazing areas within all of Israel, between Jerusalem, Tel Aviv, as well as areas within the West Bank. So, more to come about that, but it was definitely an eye-opening about how fragile democracy is and what they're fighting for, things that we fight for as well. Just recently attended the Terre Linda Neighborhood Association. This is a bit of a change because they have now moved from a homeowners' association to a neighborhood association with the recognition that they need to be, they wanted to move to be more inclusive of the whole community. Over, I think there were over 100 people who attended the community meeting, which was really great. Supervisor Mary Sackett and myself gave updates. There were lots of questions. So, that was a really great opportunity to finally reach the community in a different way than we have in the past. So, those neighborhood association meetings were really valuable. And then also, back to MWPA, for people who are really interested in deep diving into wildfire evacuation, there's a new report called the Literature Review of the State of the Science in Wildfire Evacuation. And this really talks through the details, what is out there and what is the current practice and understanding. So, I'd encourage people to, you know, again, go to the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority site to see what is out there, but this is actually funded and contributed based on, through the support of everyone contributing to Measure C. This is just one of the deliverables, but it is a very, very interesting report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I attended the Priority Setting Committee meeting on Thursday, March 30th. This meeting is chaired by Supervisor Eric Lukin and facilitated by Senior Planner Molly Cron. The meeting was to review applications in a workshop format. No decisions were made. Additional funding was made available, even though we're midway through the planning cycle. So, a notice of funding availability was sent out by the county in February, and this was just an opportunity for the public to review submitted applications. I will just say that the city of San Rafael did submit an application for some work in the canal to remediate some dangerous conditions. We hope it gets approved, but it was a substantial request. So, that will be, recommendations will be made at the next meeting on May 18th. I also had the opportunity to do ride-alongs with both of our public safety departments, fire and police. Thank you to all folks who supported my evening. I just want to name a couple folks. With fire, Captain Burkey, engineer, Mike McCarthy, and firefighter Everett Taylor. And then on the police side, I had the chance to sit next to Lee Dispatcher Andora Lee. She regaled how she even pursued her career in dispatch, as well as being safely driven around by Officer Rosati. She delivered service excellently in the community. That was my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
I have quite a few items to report, but I promise you at the end, there's good news. Keep you interested. All right. I spoke at the Point San Pedro Road Coalition's spring meeting about two weeks ago, gave an update on San Rafael items, including the big news in that neck of the woods, movement in Fire Station 55. I also met with Supervisor Sackett. The supervisors are in the middle of their budgetary negotiations. I provided some input on items that I thought would be beneficial to San Rafael. I attended the board meeting of the Marin Transit Agency. That was this morning. The final changes to the fixed route, fixed route offerings have been adopted. They were tweaked a little bit from the initial proposal, but as far as San Rafael is concerned, the changes are the same as we discussed about a month ago, when we first heard the proposals. I also attended a meeting of the Public Service Award Committee for San Rafael. I'm always delighted to do that because I believe I am the last sitting office holder. I'm always delighted to do that because I believe I am the last sitting office holder who had the honor of serving with Dick O'Brien. So that was a special, especially fun committee meeting to attend. Today, I spoke at the Rotary of San Rafael's luncheon. I gave an update on San Rafael issues there. That looked suspiciously like the update I gave to the Point San Pedro Road Coalition, but it were all about efficiency. And I was delighted to have Chief White there to answer some wildfire prevention questions with a great level of detail than I was able to present. And I also attended the Marin Elected Women's Luncheon. Now, finally, I attended the Locklomond Oversight Committee Meeting. And I am happy to announce through my membership on that, on that committee, that the board, the breakwater path has been reopened. So the gates are open and you can now go out on the break wall. Those of you who haven't walked out there, it's absolutely beautiful. Highly encourage you to do that. Those of you with small children waiting for the playground, probably two to three more weeks, depending on the weather, to get that done. Thank you.
Fantastic. And I'll report out just on three meetings I was able to attend. I also went on the San Rafael Fire Department Ride Along, which is kind of what it sounds like. You get to ride into the fire truck. You get to hang out with the team at the Public Safety Center. And like Councilmember Hill, just very impressed with the professionalism of our first responders. So thank you to Chief White and his team for enabling all of us. I think all of us will be doing that. So you'll continue to hear report outs from, from the council on that. I am your representative on TAM, Transportation Authority of Marin. We had two agenda items. We approved Measure A, AA, and Measure B revenue projections. So that really looks at both sales tax and other factors. And that will be rolled up into the budget. We also had a really interesting presentation on the San Anselmo Hub Study. So we all drive through the hub. And it was from the incredibly, how do we say, fanciful out there thinking to what might be able to be done in a short timeframe. As we all know, there's a lot of traffic that goes through that hub. And if you've tried to ride your bike or walk through it, it is a challenge. So hopefully, there will be some funding and further study on that really important intersection. And then finally, as you all know, San Rafael participates in the Gun Safety Collaborative. This is run through Marin County DA's office. When we met last Monday, it was 129th mass shooting in the United States in 86 days. The Nashville shooting had just occurred. So our participation as a city is incredibly important to do what we can to be proactive in preventing gun violence in our community. Right now, the Marin County Office of Education is doing a gun safety campaign. Thank you to San Rafael Police Department for putting that on the social media. I've put it on mine. I haven't put it on for today, but I will. And the message behind that is for people who have firearms in their homes to store them safely. That is the message behind that campaign. In addition, we had an update on the gun violence restraining orders called GVROs for short. And it's an opportunity to, to offer more training. It's a tool that's available to our community. There have been seven trainings in Marin County of over 600 professionals. Those trainings continue to be ongoing. If it's something that you are part of an agency or an institution that you want to learn more, the difference between the gun violence restraining orders, it doesn't, don't just have to be a first responder in order to utilize this tool. It has much more flexible usage. So I've also reached out to the other mayors in Marin County. I think it's great that San Rafael is participating, but this cannot just be our community that's having the conversation. And I'm delighted that I heard from both the Mayor of Sausalito and the Mayor of San Anselmo. I'm sure the others are going to email me shortly too, about participating and, and starting to talk about gun violence in our world and what we can do locally to prevent it happening here. So more to come on that. With that, we always welcome public comment on the city managers and council member reports. I will look to the chamber if anyone would like to comment on the reports. Not seeing anyone. We are hybrid, so virtually, if anyone would like to comment on the reports.
I do see one hand raised.
Thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Yeah, I was intrigued by Councilmember Kurtz's comments about her trip to Israel. She rattled off a bunch of place names. One word I did not hear in her entire description was the word Palestinian. I guess they don't exist. I guess, I guess their plight doesn't exist. I guess their challenges don't exist. Anyway, I think it is ill-advised to, 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 to talk about your trip to Israel without, without mentioning that, that the Palestinian people have been in crisis for decades now. And, and it is really an apartheid state. And, you know, and I think your parallel to the United States is very similar. We too live in an apartheid state, which is, you know, the subject of Michelle Alexander's landmark book, The New Jim Crow. And you see that with the beating of Mateo and the fact that this inept city council and this inept mayor cannot seem to do anything about the police officer. And, and this isn't, this is one of the incidents we actually found out about. Because as the paper trail from the city attorney's office makes very clear, you know, your, your officers are not even obliged to keep their body cameras on. They can turn it on and off at their own discretion. And Officer Lynn Murphy does. And I have her on my video doing that over and over again and on, on body cam that I retrieved from the City of San Rafael. So yes, democracy is in crisis, but it's in crisis here in San Rafael because of the mayor. It's in crisis because of the council members. It's in crisis because of your corrupt police department. And so you should do something and not just complain that it's a crisis in some other country that...
I see no other hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and go to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the council would like to hold from the consent calendar? Nope. Are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar? First, I'll look into the chambers. And this is item 4A through 4G. Not seeing anyone in the chambers. Is there anyone virtually who'd like to comment on the consent agenda?
I see no hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. And I do want to just highlight and uphold that there are two proclamations on our consent agenda. One is to celebrate Diversity Month. And I want to thank our HR Director Melissa Sanchez for her work on that and its also the month of the young child. So you can read that in the staff report. So with that, I request a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to approve our, our consent calendar.
Correct.
Second?
Move in second. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yoren Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. The next item is a special presentation. It will be the presentation of, the presentation of resolution of appreciation of public service award recipient. We accept public comment prior to the presentation. So if there's anyone in the chambers that would like to comment on the presentation that we're about to have? Not seeing anyone. Is there anyone virtually who'd like to comment on the public service award?
I see no hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and ask the council to join me in front of the... So as Councilmember Bushy had mentioned earlier, there's, we are very fortunate for the generosity of the O'Brien family and the Richard O'Brien and Mary Ferrero O'Brien Award. And it's given to the person who represents the epitome of public service here in San Rafael. It's a longstanding award. And we are always delighted to recognize these unsung men and women in our community. And tonight, we will present this award to Melissa Prandy. Come on down, Melissa. Really, her expression was awesome. We got to see it. Come, stand here, collect yourself. You have a moment here. You have a moment. I'm going to talk about you. I'm going to talk about you. You can be shocked. And maybe I'll get embarrassed. Here we go. Whereas Melissa Prandy was selected as a recipient of the Public Service Award due to her consistent level of selflessness demonstrated throughout her life's work. As a business owner in San Rafael, she models community engagement, encourages her team to participate in volunteer work. And whereas Melissa has spent much of her time volunteering with the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors, the Downtown Business Improvement District, the Dominican University, the Women's Philanthropy Leadership Council, the Rotary Club of San Rafael, and many more associations. Whereas Melissa has led fundraising efforts for Miozo Marin, the Marin Center for Independent Living, the Marin Shakespeare Company, Suzuma, the Career Technical Education Center, Slide Ranch, and three international charities, including the Melissa Prandy Children's Foundation. During the first 30 days of COVID, she organized the Rotary Club of San Rafael's boards fundraising of $50,000 to the Marin Community Foundation, which gave back to smaller nonprofits in Marin County. And whereas Melissa takes every challenge she has faced in her life and turns it into an opportunity to help those around her. She is a survivor of domestic violence and has dedicated her time, energy, and money to the Center for Domestic Peace and has been a keynote speaker at events where she shared some of her most personal experiences in an effort to raise awareness. And whereas Melissa has made such an impact to the community that she received a total of six nominations for the Public Service Award. In the opinion of her nominators, Melissa is a force of nature who brings economic prosperity to San Rafael, which helps our entire community, including our public schools. She is an incredible community member with an amazing can-do attitude, is extremely generous, constantly gives back financially and dedicates her time and skills to make San Rafael and Marin a better place to live for everyone. Her efforts and accomplishments have bettered our community and communities across the world in many ways, which has earned her the City of San Rafael's Public Service Award for 2023. And therefore, let it be resolved that the San Rafael City Council presses, expresses its appreciation to Melissa Prandy on behalf of her community and hereby awards her the Richard O'Brien and Mary Ferrero O'Brien Public Service Award for 2023. On behalf of the council and our community, we are so grateful to you. And I can tell you, look how small the print is, because let me tell you, there is a lot more to say, but we ran out of room on the piece of paper. Melissa, you are such an angel and an honor to have in our community. If you're up to it, we'd love to have you say a few words. You can take a deep breath.
I am shocked. So thank you. Thank you. I love where I live and I love being here. I've lived here exclusively for 60 years. So my entire life, I've never left the Marin County border. I don't plan to leave San Rafael ever until they take me out. So I'm shocked. I feel very flushed. You got me. I was coming to speak on behalf of rent control. So I had no idea. I wondered why one of my best friends walked in the room, but I thought she was just here because we were talking about apartments and rent control. So thank you very much. I'm honored and with a lot of loss of words, really.
A loss of words? Okay. With that, we would love to have a photo with you here. This is for you. And because we love a celebration, we're going to recess for 10, 10 minutes because there are cupcakes in the lobby. So please come back and talk with our newest award recipient.
...
Items on the agenda. The first one is Notice of Funding Availability for Affordable Housing. And I, Alexis, we'll just hand it right over to you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kate, Vice Mayor, members of the city council and the public. Tonight, I'm presenting information related to the release of a Notice of Funding Availability for Affordable Housing. The City of San Rafael maintains an Affordable Housing Trust Fund and periodically issues notices of funding availability, or NOFA's, to solicit requests for city funding from entities who are currently developing or interested in developing affordable housing in San Rafael. I'm pleased to announce that the San Rafael Community Development Department plans to release a NOFA for $1.4 million for construction and preservation of affordable housing. The funding will be awarded through a competitive process. Qualified responses may be awarded in full or in part, and funding may be awarded to one or more projects. The Community Development Department plans to release the NOFA in early April. Responses will be due in mid-May, and awards will be brought to the city council for consideration in June 2023. Eligible projects include new construction projects, including the residential portions of mixed-use and live-work projects that meet the affordability requirements of the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund guidelines, and acquisition and rehabilitation projects, including conversion of market-rate housing or adaptive reuse of non-residential buildings to affordable housing. Eligible activities include acquisition and pre-development activities, construction, and any other activity that helps address the city's affordable housing goals. Nonprofit and for-profit developers are eligible to apply, and responses must demonstrate that the sponsor and all members of the developer team have the capacity to construct and successfully operate the affordable housing and deliver services for residents. The affordable housing will need to meet the goals of the funding and be able to leverage additional philanthropic, county, state, and federal dollars. Interested entities will be able to download the application and submit their response online and via email, and city staff will be available to support all entities interested in responding. As part of the NOFA, staff will continue providing technical support to all awarded teams as the projects proceed through pre-development and development and into operation. And entities who are not awarded in this round will be able to request insight from staff for filing successful responses to future NOFA's the city will issue. Staff's recommended action is to receive and accept this report, and we're available to answer questions, provide additional information, and adjust the NOFA based on city council feedback. Thank you. I'll hand it back to you, Mayor Kate.
Thank you so much. I will look to my colleagues for questions. Yeah, Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much for the report. This is exciting. Are we, I'm just curious to see, we are advertising this. How are we reaching out to developers or nonprofits?
Absolutely. So we will be posting this on the city website. We have a list of developers and interested parties that this release will go out to on the day of the release. And we've also, the county will be sending it out to a list that they have. We'll probably put it on LinkedIn and a couple other social media sites.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Kurtz and then Councilmember Hill.
Thank you for the update. It is really great to see that this is coming forward now. I do have a couple of questions. This is our third time going through the NOFA process, and I'm wondering if there's been any differences between the three releases. Do you want me to do all the other, all the questions at once? Okay. Second one is what drives the release for us? Is it a particular amount that is in the fund? Or a particular timing? Or I'll take credit for nudging, a lot of nudging. And then the other one is, as we go forward, how does this process become more predictable? In terms of if it's, if there haven't been a lot of changes between or any changes between the multiple releases, does that mean we're in a, just an ongoing process right now that there is something that triggers it and then we release that NOFA? And lastly, the guardrails. When is the amount too low? Not, not for the request, but of the, when we release the NOFA, how much needs to be in there and when is it going to be too high? Like, are there guardrails for this fund? So that's, and that's it. Thank you.
Thanks for those questions. So I'll start with the sort of the cycle of when the city releases NOFA's. And it's not a specific timeframe, like every year, every two years. It is really based on the fund balance. And also just taking into consideration the other things that the city and staff are moving forward at any given time. But particularly the fund balance. So for example, if the fund balance has, you know, $500,000, that may not be just from a project impact standpoint, but also a staff capacity and time required standpoint. May not be, makes sense to move a NOFA forward at that time. We probably wouldn't recommend it. As far as a maximum or a minimum, we don't have a set minimum, but we do maintain funds in the trust fund to, for our contracts related to administration of the below-market-rate rental and ownership housing programs. Those are, those contracts are covered through that fund. So in a way, we have a little bit of a minimum there. You'll see we set aside some funds for, for that purpose. As far as a maximum, I wish we had that problem. But definitely, when we have a large infusion of dollars from projects, that sort of catalyzes a NOFA and we want to get those funds out there and make use of, and, and let developers, affordable housing developers make use of them as, as soon as possible. As far as increasing the predictability, one thing that we've been working on is putting together sort of a development project pipeline for, for affordable housing developments and, and residential and also commercial, and looking at who, which projects look like they're going to build units onsite. And so they wouldn't be paying the in-lu fee and which are saying that they're probably going to pay the in-lu fee. And so that we have a better sense of what kind of dollars we're thinking are going to come into the trust fund. Similarly, similarly for commercial projects, are they going to have a net increase in square footage? Because that would mean that they're going to be paying into the fund and, and trying to get a sense of, is it going to be a little bit of money? Or is it, is it going to be a lot? And that'll, that'll help us be able to, to know. I think you had one more question. Okay, thank you. This is really quite similar to the last release in late 2021, I would say. We continue to follow the Affordable Housing Trust Fund guidelines that were established by the city council. And so we have not made significant changes.
Great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Councilmember Kurtz asked my question. I have, I have comments for later. Thank you.
Yes, my questions too. Councilwoman Bushy, any questions on this item? Okay. Not seen any. I will open it up to public comment. Any members of the public? Sure. Come on down. Introduce yourself if you would like.
Good evening. My name is Al Viteri. I live in Gersel Park. I'm not familiar with this process, but listening to what you were saying as to the scope of it, it sounded like people who would be interested would also include people who are interested in affordable housing, which suggests that not individuals who are going to actually create affordable housing. They may be providing different examples of how to implement affordable housing in ways that aren't currently done now and requesting funding to support that effort. And my question is, is that also part of this? Or is it not, is strictly people who are going to actually build a house and not a theory about how housing should be built? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll gather all the questions before answering them. Anyone else in the chambers? Not seen anyone? Is there anyone virtually who'd like to comment on this item?
I see no hands raised, but I'll give everyone a moment. I've seen a public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. Excellent question about, just drilling down a little bit more. Who can actually apply for these funds and what can they be used for?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So the Affordable Housing Trust Fund dollars are specifically for the development of housing units. And the reason for that is that the in-lu fees that are paid are meant to, and the commercial linkage fees as well, are, the commercial linkage fees are meant to offset the, the additional demand for housing that will be created through having additional commercial space. So additional people working in the city who will need to need housing. And then the in-lu fees are, are meant to, because they're not providing affordable units onsite, then they go into the fund and we need to prove, to create the affordable units through the, through the in-lu fee. So thanks for that question.
Thank you. We'll come back for comments and then a motion. So first comments, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you for the report. I just hope that we can get some developers to take advantage and really build it. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
It's always fun to have these. And I, I hope, I always hope that the projects that come in, that will be the last dollar that, you know, gets the, gets the project done. So very excited to see what comes in the door.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
No, I also really support the NOFA process that we have. In one sense, I wish the dollars were more. In the other sense, I wish we had more affordable housing. So I think it's good. I think the amounts are, I mean, today the costs are so high on these projects that the, putting this forward is, as Councilmember Bushy mentioned, to push these projects to get to a completion. 1.4 and any is not, you know, these days it might be, you know, changes of doorknobs. I mean, it's just so expensive to produce anything these days. So, but I do think there's opportunity and I really do like the, the open openings that developers could do for renovation.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm always thrilled when the Notice of Funding Availability comes out. I will just want to share the last time, all the projects that have been successful from the last funding round in, in March of 2022. We had 2.6 million. We were able to fund and help get over the line. This doesn't seem like that long ago, but now Mill Street is open. That was funded. Vivaleon Healthy Aging funded. We can see it on Third there. And we also have 3301 Kerner being rehabilitated. That's in process, obviously. And then $400,000 to Canal Alliance to help rehabilitate. These are all tangible, tactile, affordable housing units in our community. So looking forward to what's next. So thanks for making sure this gets out.
Thank you. And I concur. It's always nice to have funding available to promote the affordable housing we would like in our community. These dollars are so precious because they're flexible. So often government funding is very, it's dictated and there's only certain ways that the funding can be used. And what makes the NOFA and these dollars is that they can be the last dollar. They can be used to match with either philanthropies or philanthropy agencies or with other agencies. And that was how it was used before in the projects that Councilmember Hill just, just mentioned. So I know it's
projects that councilmember Hill just, just mentioned. So I know it's a bit of work on the staff side, but I think we all agree that it actually enables us a flexibility and expand the possibilities here in San Rafael. So thank you. With that, I would request a motion on this item.
I'd like to make a motion to, let's see, accept report for the notice of funding availability for affordable housing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Enzalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. Thank you so much, Alexis. Thank you, Director. Our final item this evening is the county wide fire dispatch changes. I see Chief White is here to discuss this item with the council. Welcome.
Thank you.
Maybe pull the microphone. Oh, yes. There you go. Just pull it up a little bit. There we go. So we can hear you. Perfect.
How about now? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the council, city manager Shits, city attorney Epstein, assistant city manager Little Bitch and city clerk Lara. I'm here tonight to discuss the informational report on the dissolution of the contract with the Marin County Sheriff's Office and our current negotiations with the Marin County Fire Department when it comes to our provision of fire dispatch services. And so my, my hope is that you'll accept this report tonight about current and upcoming fire dispatch conversations and activities. Going back to 2009, my predecessor, Fire Chief Chris Gray, was in a bit of a predicament and had the great foresight and ability to negotiate a solution under relative duress and trying to ensure that we had the ability to provide dispatch capability and services to our community. And he was able to enter, enter into an agreement with the Marin County Sheriff's Office at that time to assume full responsibility for fire dispatch services for San Rafael. And that was also a benefit to our community and to the department because it allowed us to be on the same system with other agencies and thereby be able to provide lateral support for them when needed throughout the county and vice versa, being able to receive real time assistance from other agencies when we needed it here in San Rafael. So it was a mutually beneficial arrangement that's been working for us for nearly 15 years. That being said, there were a few challenges that occurred several years back where some of the fire chiefs had sought to implement some technological solutions that the sheriff's office weren't quite prepared or capable of, of accomplishing for a number of reasons. But that being said, the fire chiefs at that time decided to enter into a study called REDCOM, and that's a Redwood Empire Dispatch Commer, Communication Center. The study was done and completed around mid-June of 2020, just after my arrival. The, the challenge with that study though, is that it didn't really yield a viable solution or option for the agencies within the county, largely in part because of some concurrent legislation that was underway and some other private stakeholder concerns, along with just it became very cost prohibitive for the entire county, let alone each individual agency. So that conversation kind of subsided for a while and entered last summer, our newly elected sheriff, Jamie Scardina, several weeks after being elected, he sat and sat and met with all the fire chiefs throughout the county and at that time spoke of their intent and desire to actually dissolve the contract with the fire departments regarding our fire dispatch capability and the service that they provided. And he had a fairly aggressive timeline initially, but as he started to realize the magnitude of what it would take to actually move away from providing service through the sheriff and then finding another solution, he understood that was going to take time. But he also saw and communicated some of the challenges he had that led to his decision. One of those challenges being something that's actually a regional challenge that I've been familiar with for at least the last 10 years. And it's especially unique for Marin County Sheriff's Office in that there's this dispatchers were not just doing law enforcement, they were doing fire and EMS dispatch as well. That's a very, a unique dynamic that doesn't really exist on a widespread basis. And so he had challenges trying to recruit, hire and retain employees who were capable of doing that. The mandatory overtime and all of those things that result from that just became a bit more to manage than I think the sheriff wanted to continue to manage. And so he saw this as an opportunity, as did the fire department eventually, the county wide fire agencies to see this as a viable option. It may be perfect timing for us to actually provide command and control capability that we didn't currently have with the Marin County Sheriff's Office model, but also be able to introduce some technological solutions, including automated vehicle location, where you can assign the closest unit to a call, no matter what boundary or what jurisdiction that unit may be in. And so that and several other technological things really became something that we started to get more excited about because now there's a possibility we can do this and we can do this in an affordable way, but do it countywide in a way that we weren't able to land on with the REDCOM study. But that being said, we weren't sure where we were going to go initially. So several weeks after the conversation occurred with Sheriff Scardina, Chief Weber from Marin County Fire Department actually shared this conversation with the group of Cal Chief, or Marin County Fire Chiefs at the Cal Chiefs Conference, that Marin County Fire Department might be willing to provide those services in much the same way that the sheriff had provided them. They thereby, they take on the full responsibility, leverage some of the resources they have at the Woodacre site, but look at constructing and crafting something that could be a solution for all. So with that, we entered into preliminary conversations with the sheriff and the other fire, or excuse me, with Chief Weber and the other fire chiefs. But simultaneously decided to do our due diligence and have conversations with San Rafael PD, being that they have a dispatch capability here as well. And we wanted to explore, would that be a possibility and what would that look like? Unfortunately, we learned that it would probably be a similar challenge for, for the San Rafael PD to try to absorb that responsibility in much the same way that the sheriff was having that challenge. Couple that with the, the idea that digital service and open government provided us with a cost estimate that was fairly eye opening. So I'll just, I'll say, given that, we really, you know, started to look more closely at the Marin County Fire Department option. The, the challenge there though is we identified some areas of concern when it came to the billing and cost recovery mechanism. So we're still looking to negotiate and, and arrive at some sort of consensus with the other agencies within the county right now to ensure that the model that we're operating from is one, it's acceptable, but it's also equitably distributing the cost amongst all agencies and not, say, San Rafael, who's the larger recipient of the service, taking on a bulk of the responsibility financially. So, so those conversations continue right now. And given that, Chief Weber, I think he's of the same mindset that he'd like to get to consensus on this. There's going to be some forthcoming conversations with the other fire chiefs here in the near future because they haven't seen the budget adjustments at this point that, that kind of shows them seeing an increase, potential increase in their costs, maybe a potential decrease in our costs here. So more to follow on that. But I just want to, in closing, just indicate that we also, we submitted a letter of, a non-binding letter of interest or intent to ensure that they felt, Marin County Fire Department and the other fire departments felt that we were willing to be part of this partnership and continue on with the value and the, the approach that was long sought after by Chief Gray and many others, which was, how do we unify the entire community and, and start to regionalize somehow in an effective manner so that our services are optimized, but at the same time, cost effective and cost efficient? And I think our partnering and being part of this, this, this new contract for services is going to ensure that we remain part of the countywide effort and we start to really develop and, and take full advantage of those other technological changes and other cost efficiencies that may develop down the road. I've already heard as an example of other agencies like San Mateo County having an interest and potentially being dispatched by this new potential. And so this is not for common knowledge, but it's just something that's been rumored. Although it's out here now. So, but just those conversations have been happening. I'm familiar with the fire chief there and I've had conversations with Chief Weber as well. So just wanted to, to share that information and say that, you know, if there is ever to be any future agreement on this, which we hope we can arrive at an agreement, we'll certainly return back to council with a full report and a request for your approval at that time. So with that, that concludes my report. And if there are any questions, I'll do my best.
Okay. Vice Mayor, any questions?
No, no questions. I really appreciate the thoughtful approach and this is a big, you know, system change. So, so yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy, any questions?
Just one quick one, extremely high level. I think I know the answer to this, but I think our constituents would like to hear you say it.
Yes.
Your absolute commitment to ensure that at all times, there will be a world-class fire dispatch system available from somewhere for all of the residents of San Rafael.
Oh, absolutely. That was one of the first things when the sheriff indicated that he was no longer interested in providing the service. It became a real serious concern for everyone as soon as we heard that. What are we going to do next? Because we hadn't arrived at a solution with REDCOM, as I stated earlier. Just didn't seem that we were going to be in a, a good position. This might take a lot longer than we expected. Were we going to do a contract for services or were we going to do the more time consuming joint powers agreement? And so I think we all realized pretty quickly that the contract for services was probably the expedite a way of ensuring timely service and a timely agreement. But yeah, you, there's, there's no way in the modern era, you can go without providing such a critical component to our fire and EMS response. This is, this is just, this is almost like the lifeblood secondary to water and other, you know, key things that we use to, to do what we have to do and do it successfully. And so fire dispatches are a critical component of what we do. And in order to make sure we have a capable emergency medical dispatch, fire dispatch, maybe even somewhere down the road, an ACE accredited fire dispatch center, these things become the, the standard that we're hoping to set here eventually to ensure that those ongoing services are there and they're there at the best possible way they can be delivered. And so with that, although I won't be running it, I've, I've had some experience with fire dispatch in the past. Chief Weber is jokingly, you know, looking forward to this, but I think as we look at the, the importance of all of the changes that come with the training, with the onboarding of staff, the, the equipment and the computer aided dispatch and the reconfigurations of systems, all of these things all tie in together and there's, there's costs associated with it, but it certainly improves what we're capable of doing in the present and moving forward as well.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you for the update. It'll be interesting as this progresses and moves forward. In terms of the, do we anticipate, and I may have missed this if you already mentioned this, apologize, that the dispatch will be in Marin County? Will it be based here versus? Okay.
Sheriff Scardina has graciously allowed us to utilize some of the space at the 1600 Los Gamos site. Originally, we were going to land right next to where the sheriff's current dispatch center and control area is, but quickly we realized that that's probably not the optimal location. They found another location within the building, I believe, where the Office of Emergency Services staff had been operating during the pandemic. So they're now looking at that whole area as the area that they'd like to set up shop and potentially have the ability to expand if need be. So it'll still be right here in Marin County.
Great. Appreciate it. Thank you. And so I think the, the timing from where we were July 23, like in a couple of months seemed really aggressive. And so spring is really next spring, 2024 is really, and so that's looking not only the system implementation, but then also probably all the testing and it should be a seamless, right?
That's the hope. I gotta tell you, 12 months from now, and I think this is what Chief Weber is aiming for is spring of 2024. I think Sheriff Scardina would also appreciate if we're able to, to transition at that point. But there is a lot of infrastructure that needs to be put in place. There is a lot of training that you just mentioned that needs to happen and ensure that we have the individuals ready to assume their responsibility. So we're not sure who exactly our candidates are just at this point, but if they're entry level or lateral, that's going to make the difference in what type of training they have to receive. But the goal is to ensure that we go live and we have skilled and capable individuals who are able to actually sit at the consoles and take those calls and, and dispatch effectively.
And one more follow-up question. I hope I didn't cut you off there. The JPA that you're working on, the Joint Power Authority, would it assume that everyone in Marin County, all the jurisdictions have to go on? Or would it be, it would be an option for some jurisdictions to choose not to and still have it operate?
It, it's really going to be a contract for services as opposed to a JPA, but it's, it's done with the premise that everyone actually is there and onboard and, and has their own individual contract. That's how you spread and equitably distribute the cost of stand-up costs for infrastructure costs. And then eventually the, either CAT activity or call volume costs based on population. Those are the things we're discussing right now. But it, it's, it's going to be optimal if everyone opts in. It's going to be difficult for someone to not opt in because there's no other solution out there.
And all the shared service of it. Yes, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
I have no questions. I'll have comments to conclusion.
Thank you. I don't have, Councilmember Kurtz asked my question about the timing and really just trying to understand how it's going to happen in the real world. So appreciate you explaining that. So let's see if the public has any questions and then we'll come back to you. So I will open up the public comment on this item. And Chief, it looks like maybe if you move to the side so Mr. Viteri can come down and comment. Thank you. Yeah, no, wait, come to the microphone. Wait, come to the microphone so it can be recorded.
Al Viteri, Gersel Park. Worked a lot of years in technology, so I've got scars up and down. Is this new technology or is this proven technology that you're proposing adopting?
So what we'll do is collect all the questions and then we'll have the chief answer them.
That's it?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Not seen anyone else in the chambers or anyone virtually who would like to comment on this item?
I see no hands raised and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment. And you could speak to the technology. Are we upgrading? Is it something new? Is it something we've seen before?
I believe we are upgrading, but I think this is technology that's been in use and proven to be effective elsewhere. So it wouldn't be like we're doing the, the beta or the pilot offering of this. This is something that's out there and already vetted.
Fantastic. I don't think we want to be a beta on this one.
No.
So I will bring it back to the council for additional comments before the motion. Vice Mayor.
No comments. I just look forward to, well, I guess that is a comment.
Yeah, yes.
But I just look forward to see the progress. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief White, as ever, for ensuring that we're up to date on where things are. This seems really important to make certain that we can adequately dispatch for fire. Just some comments that I think are self-evident, but said anyway, when we look towards how do we equitably share costs, I'm imagining there's a capital cost for implementation and then there's the annual costs. Obviously, look forward to making certain that we have a, a good formula. I think San Rafael has the opportunity to get loaded, maybe overloaded with, with costs. So thank you for, in advance, for achieving equity across all the departments that will participate. It'll be great. You kind of alluded to this, but it'd be great to bring in even more departments outside of Marin. That might help defray some of the costs, at least on the implementation. I think the timeline feels aggressive for a procurement of this magnitude because we're thinking, you know, an RFP, an RFP release, an evaluation, and then the acquisition, and then, you know, how are we going to staff it? I can, you've mentioned a couple of things that concerned me about entry level versus lateral. That could create a very great difference in timeline. Hopefully sheriff might be amenable to have some of the more senior folks lateral over. That might be helpful. And that's, those are my comments. I know I didn't ask any questions, but those are my comments.
Great, great comments. Councilmember Kurtz.
Looking forward to seeing the update. I agree with Councilmember Hill about the timeline, even in 2024 seems aggressive for a system implementation.
I agree. They're, they're tooling away at it right now as we speak. So let's hope that, you know, they can keep it on the fast track and maintain that, that, that push. We'll see.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
Just to make some comments on something we haven't talked about, and that's the efficiencies that come from bringing together a, a contract for service with many different entities and the, the departments coming together. Hopefully this is the start of even more on efficiencies to be gained by contracts for service on other things. So the administrative way that this is happening is, has benefits in and of itself, although the technology being brought is, is a great thing as well. So very much looking forward to the, the schedule, the rollout schedule. As soon as it is sound and ready to be implemented, we'll be excited to have it in service. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Chief, for coming here. We know that the timeline, as we've talked about, is a little bit long and extended, but we know that the community has probably heard that the dispatch services was going to be changing. We wanted to have this report from you so people can know what to expect. It's always hard when government changes the way they have done things, but we know and what we're hearing. It's always hard when government changes the way they have done things, but we know, and, um, what we're hearing tonight is it will be done better. Um, and we'll start to consolidate and, and we know that you and your team are, are working to get a schedule or get a program that benefits San Rafael and still has the world-class nature and good response times that we all expect. So thank you and we look forward to, um, hearing more as it unfolds. That's the appropriate time.
Thank you.
And with that, there's a straight, let me see, I call, um, can I have a motion on this item, please?
Move that we accept the report.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yaden Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries five zero. Thanks so much, Chief.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
And with that, we have no, uh, San Rafael successor agency item, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Good night.